Joe, this is your chance.
I gotta work to be invited.
Joe, let's go, Joe.
Let's roll. Come on, Joe, let's roll.
This is how coups happen.
Can our mayor put him here?
Yeah.
Let's roll.
He was in charge. Air is officially late.
How many meetings has he missed in eight years?
I don't know of any.
Does the mayor call the mayor?
I have not.
Jay-Z, where's the mayor?
There he is.
There he is, right there.
Oh, thank goodness.
See, the minute you ask, there he is.
Let's try to destroy everybody off. Thank heavens.
You saw it in your package.
Now we can get this show on the road.
You want it? It should be in the front of mine.
Am I going to officially consider this as...
Don't.
Mine has got to be here somewhere.
I didn't hear anything. I did not hear it.
Unless you brought it here.
The January 17th meeting of the City Council of the City of Springfield, Illinois is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman DeCenso.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to recognize Chief Scarlett. Come forward and former Chief Kenny Winslow for a presentation of accreditation. Now, let them do the honors of describing what's about to take place.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's nice to see everybody.
Welcome back.
Lies.
It's nice to be up here and not be on the hot seat, to be honest with you.
You look nice and relaxed.
We can make it hot.
The only thing now, I can walk away. That's a good thing.
Right.
No, we're here tonight to obviously recognize the hard work of the men and women of Springfield Police Department. Two years ago, the Springfield Police Department went down the road of accreditation with the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police. And tonight, I'm here on the behalf of the Board of Officers of the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police to recognize Springfield Police Department is the 53rd accredited department in the state. What does that mean for you? That means that their policies, their procedures, their best practices have been embraced by an outside set of eyes, assessors who are professionals in the field, who come in and not only see that your policies state what they state, but also that you're living up to them, that you provide proofs, that you show that you are meeting these standards. With that said, there's 181 standards and best practices that have to be met to reach what we call Tier Two, which is our highest level of accreditation. There's less than 100 departments accredited through the whole state when you take all accrediting bodies in the state of Illinois, which is CLEA and the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police. Fifty-three of those departments are with the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police, and less than half are Tier Two accredited. So it's something special to say that the police department exposed itself, it opened its doors, it was open to criticism, it was open to change, it was open to embracing those things that we need to do to show our communities and the state that we are doing the best things out there. I'm proud of the Illinois Springfield Police Department for their efforts here. I was particularly proud of the men and women who worked hand-in-hand on this for 22 months to get to where it needed to be, where they could be accredited. So with that said, at this point in time, I'd like to bring up Chief Scarlett. Chief, who else do you want to invite up?
Lieutenant Bob Jones and Sergeant Ricky McMasters. Do you guys want to come up? While they're coming up, these two were extremely instrumental in really what became a labor of love to ensure that our agency did absolutely everything possible to achieve this monumental accreditation process. And I couldn't be more grateful for Lieutenant Bob Jones and, under his direction, folks like Sergeant Ricky McMasters and a couple other individuals that have since retired, really amassed several hundred hours of work, again, to, like I said, to ensure that this process was not only taken on, but it was taken on, like I said, with that labor of love to see this process through and to ultimately receive this award. And it means so much more than just a plaque on a wall. This is who we are as a community. This is who we are as a team here at Springfield Police Department. And it's not only myself that gets to reap this benefit, but it's the senior staff as well and every officer on this department. So couldn't be more proud of Lieutenant Bob Jones and Sergeant Ricky McMasters. And really, this is your plaque, so I'm going to let you guys receive that.
Get up there. We want to get a nice picture of you guys. Get up there. The other thing I just wanted to say, what does this look at? Sometimes I get asked, what does this look at? We talked about policy and procedure, but we're talking about things that, breaking it down for real world talk. We're talking about investigative practices. We're talking about internal affairs. We're talking about operations such as fleeing and looting policies and procedures. We're talking about administration such as evidence, such as record-keeping. That's all the things we look at. We look at every aspect of the department. And as I stated earlier, less than 50, only 53 people in the state meet all these. There's a credit, only, less than half, like 23 is what are Tier Two. So it really is something for the men and women to be proud of. And I said, Bob and Ricky, I know you've been at it since the day one. So with that said, who did, get up there with it. Oh, for all three of you, I guess.
Hey, you can't order him around no more.
I want to finish with one thing, and that's a thanks to the mayor and the council members. It really is your faith in this organization, your trust and confidence and the senior leadership that we can accomplish great things like this. So thank you very much for all that you do for us.
Chief, before you leave, has SPD sought this Tier Two level accreditation in the past? Could you comment on that?
We were previously CLEA certified, and that was in the very early 2000s. So we have not been accredited, and I would say close to 20 years.
Congratulations for taking the initiative.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
And thank you, Chief, and thank you to Lieutenant Bob Jones and Sergeant McMasters for your great work and everybody, the men and women of the police department. So thank you very much. It's good to see you, former Chief Winslow. First item on the zoning agenda is docket number 2022-064 for the property located at 3410 Remington Street. Petitioner is Thermo King Quad Cities, Inc. Present zoning classification I-1 Light Industrial District Section 155.040. Requested zoning relief of variance of Sections 155.112 surfacing to allow the construction of an open off-street parking and vehicle storage area of dustless rock without requiring a wearing surface of asphaltic concrete or comparable hard surface 155.143. Plan of off-street parking or loading areas to allow construction of an open off-street parking and vehicle storage area of dustless rock without requiring plans for accessory off-street parking areas or building permit 155.480. Landscape screening and lighting regulations to allow construction of a parking area without requiring a landscape plan, including but not limited to installation and maintenance of parking lot landscaping, screening, and lighting, and the points related thereto, and 155.136 regulations for surfacing of off-street loading facilities to construct and open off-street loading spaces of dustless rock without requiring a durable hard surface pavement. History is that docket 2020-034, the petitioner was granted variances requested in this petition for a 24-month period. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval as submitted. Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is grant a two-year variance consistent with the previous actions of this body. Chair will entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept it as submitted.
Second.
Been moved to approve the request as submitted and approved by the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. And second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the request passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next on the agenda is docket number 2022-065 for the property located at 7 Pickering Lane. Petitioner is Nancy Bremhorst as a leaseholder. Present zoning classification is R1 Single Family Residence District Section 155.016. Requested zoning relief, a variance of Appendix A Section 3 regarding setbacks of the land use plan for Lake Springfield and its marginal properties to allow an in-ground pool to the west side of the existing house that will be 25 feet from the lake shoreline and a concrete pool deck 21 feet at the closest point to the shoreline instead of the 75 feet required. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is denial. Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff to deny. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We accept the planning and zoning commission's recommendation.
Second.
Been moved, second, to accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation. And second, we do have someone signed up to speak. Nancy Bremhorst.
So I appreciate giving me the time here to speak just for a few moments. The first thing I want to say is I did do a fair amount of research way back when, when I started to realize physically a swimming pool would be something that would be very beneficial to my health. I have an autoimmune disorder. And I looked back to 2015, and I looked at the requests for variances on that 75-foot setback off Lake Springfield, and there had been eight or nine that I could find going through all the records of the city council agendas and meetings, and every one of those had been granted. And some of them were as close to the lake as 16 feet, and then 42 feet, 22 feet, 20 feet. So a variety for both pools and accessory structures, which both have that same requirement to be 75 feet from the lake. So for that reason, I decided to pursue this because I just, I would benefit tremendously. I realize it's not your problem. You deal with a lot bigger issues than me needing or wanting a pool for my health and well-being. But I wanted to come here and have the opportunity to ask because it has always previously been approved by this city council group. Commissioner Sampson Black, he said he was pretty confident if I came here that I would be able to get that approved through city council. The last one approved was by the same person that I'm looking at to put a pool in. I'm looking to use, you know, very reputable contractors that have done work, Greenview. I don't foresee any erosion issues. I'm not building a big bank or a big wall. The only retaining wall would be three feet. And from the standpoint of the lake use plan, my understanding is the intent of it is to ensure the quality of the water, the quality of the environment, and also the quality of life of the residents around the lake. And I'm not impacting the water. I'm not impacting the environment. You know, there's minimal risk of erosion. And at the place where I've had the pool drawn out, which it has to be there because I have septic field on the south side of my house, at first, it was going to be a 40-foot pool so that it would be a decent lap pool for working out. But we couldn't do that because the septic tanks come too close, and so we had to cut 10 feet off so that we can stay 10 feet away from the septic tanks. So from positioning, you know, the suggestion, somebody did make the suggestion, we'll put it in your front yard. And I'm like, really? I just, you know, if you want to devalue my property, that probably would be the way to go. But putting a pool in the front yard, not only would that be very odd, but I also have a tremendous number of large, large oak trees, beautiful trees. And if any of you know the lake use plan, you can't take trees down just because, you know, you want to take them down. So for that reason, I'm asking for some relief. The 25 feet is the northwest corner. The southwest corner of the pool is 33 feet. I'm working with Justin Dean, a landscape architect at Greenview, and he's like, well, we can maybe wiggle another foot or two. I can't wiggle 10 feet. My house is at 50 feet from the lake. It was built in the 60s. Did I know when I bought this house in 2019 that my health was going to go down significantly? No. I had, you know, didn't even think. But it has. And so for the conditions that I have, the best type of exercise is non-weight bearing. So that a pool is the best way to do that, a heated pool even better for therapeutic reasons, and a saltwater pool even better for therapeutic reasons. So I'm asking you to reconsider and grant me the variance. It's been granted for every application for this since 2015. And some of those houses were brand-new houses being built where they had a choice where they put their house.
Alderman Redpath.
Thank you.
I'm going to let Matt McLaughlin speak to this, or maybe Todd LaFountain. But this is in a floodplain, and it, the closest, this is not, 16-foot was not accurate. This is the closest one. Matt, you can explain that. But absolutely, and this is also opposed by the Lake Homeowners Association, too. So Matt, if you'd explain.
Yes, that is correct. When I did research, the closest pool I could find was 35 feet, and it's not in the floodplain. This particular location is in the floodplain.
It is. I've spoken numerous times with TJ Hardsides, and we've talked about it. We've, I have a typographic survey that was done on the land in 2008 that I'm going to get redone. If it ends up being in the FEMA floodplain, I'm not building a pool. I get that. I totally get that. So, I mean, that shouldn't really, at least in the last meeting, the zoning and building, they said that's not really relevant to this. And I did find an accessory structure that was 16 feet 6 inches, another one that was 22 feet, and another one that was 24 feet from the lake. Maybe not a pool. I found a pool that was 31 feet, and I think you might have said, what, 32? So, you know, maybe working with Greenview, we can, I can get another foot or two. So that'll take me to 27 and 35.
To follow up with this, Mayor, Pickering Lane is probably one of the lanes that's going to be pretty close to next to being on the sewer program that is going around the lake. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And so, Ms. Bremhorst, it may be beneficial for you to wait for, until that happens. I think it's probably coming within the next year or so.
Well, my health isn't getting any better, sir.
I can't, I can't tell you.
I mean, and it has been approved for every other application.
Well, this, we take every...
And the Lake Association...
Can I speak? Can I speak?
Sure.
Okay. We take these, every one of these individually. Every one of those things come in front of us, and we discuss how this is going to go.
Sure.
And we didn't pick yours out of the air somewhere.
It's the first one.
Okay. But bottom line is, this is in the floodplain. And the recommendation, listen.
Okay.
The staff and the planning commission has denied it. The homeowners association's opposed to it. It's in a floodplain. It's not a proper place to put a pool.
It is, according to TJ, we don't, we're pretty sure it's not in the floodplain.
What's TJ got to do with this?
Hardside, he's the city engineer who's the FEMA person.
Can he answer, please?
Matt McLaughlin. Yeah, TJ does the floodplain reviews for the city.
And I've spoken with him, met with him, and we're, I realize if my, if it's in the floodplain, I can't, I can't put a pool there. I can't do it. I understand that, sir. But every other one has been approved. And as far as the Lake Association, the homeowners association, I mean, I don't think they were involved in any of the other ones. My understanding on most of the previous ones is they were denied by the Building and Zoning Committee and came here and then were approved. So I thought I would like that same treatment and relief that the previous ones have gotten when they've come to the city council. I don't know if they spoke. I don't know what they had to do to plead their case. But they were denied by the planning people, by, CWLP has denied, I'm pretty sure, every single one of them. I mean, but the city council approved them, and it even approved accessory structures with toilets and water running and all kinds of things that are not part of the lake use plan. And for the homeowners association to be involved in this is unusual, particularly when, well, the first house on my street is in complete violation of four regulations on the land use plan, and none of that has ever been enforced. And one of the people on the board of the homeowners association grew up in that house. It's his mother's house. So the fact that they decided to weigh in on my situation and none others, there just needs to be some consistency then.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank you. Is there a way we can hold this until TJ gets back to us on the floodplain?
And also...
And then the other, hold on, hold on. We've got the floor, okay? You can't just talk, all right?
All right. Yeah.
It's our turn to talk. Also, does the pool, does it, does it, does it sit level from the top of the elevation, or does it cut into the ground at the worst, at the bottom of the elevation, Matt? Because that would make a difference in how far it is from the, you know, in the floodplain and that. Because I know there are cases, and I think there's one in Ward 9, where they have a retaining wall, and it's technically in a floodplain that we allowed. I'm just trying to figure out what's...
I haven't seen the plan, so I can't answer that.
We don't know if it's, if it's at the highest elevation or if it's at the lowest elevation.
Yeah, I haven't seen that, so I can't answer that.
Okay. But I didn't know if we could just hold it for a month until they, until we get TJ back.
May I respond to that?
Well, I'm, that's, you got to talk to that.
May I respond? Well, TJ and, we talked, and it's going to cost me several thousand dollars to get that typographic survey done, typographic survey. TJ's like, we'll get the variance first, and then we'll figure that out. And if it, if the survey comes back that it's in the floodplain, I'm not doing it. I can't. And, I mean, TJ knows that. I can't. I won't do it. I can't build it in the floodplain. But he's pretty confident. The floodplain actually goes to the back corner of my house. But as he explained to me, when FEMA does their floodplanes, they take kind of a paintbrush and just go around the lake. And the floodplain elevation is for three, I have it somewhere, is it 359, 360? I, I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's all right. Alderman McMiniman.
This is a question to staff. Matt's occupied right now. Either Lynn O'Brien or Matt McLaughlin can answer this. We've approved pools close to the shoreline in the past, but is it correct that this pool would be the closest to the shoreline of the, any of the others that got to the city council?
By a couple feet.
I'm not asking you, ma'am.
I'm sorry. I, sorry.
Yes, that is correct.
I don't understand how this works. Sorry.
So the answer, this pool is different than the other cases we've had in the sense that the pool might be in a floodplain and is also closest to the shoreline as to the, compared to any of the others that got approval. So the answer to that was yes. Okay, thank you.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm just, want to explain, I'm going to have to vote present on this one. My daytime job is actually as State Floodplain Coordinator.
Oh.
For the Department of Natural Resources. So I will be voting present on this. I'm just going to say that, yeah.
Just leave it at that.
I, yeah, I'm going to leave it at that. I can't comment on this one.
Thank you. I don't know if CWLP would like to say anything on this.
I think they're working on it.
Oh, Mayor, I have something.
Alderwoman Purchase.
So typically, we definitely go with the homeowner, makes his recommendation. But I find it confusing that she's using TJ name a lot for what's going on, but nobody else is confirming that this is okay, or how do we know what the conversations are?
Staff recommendation is denial.
I got you, Alderman Redpath. That, that's what I just, that's all I had a concern about.
Yep. Todd or Doug can probably shed light on the process, please.
Yeah, so, I mean, typically, you know, we've got the land use plan, the 75-foot rule. That's basically the technical recommendation is always to stay outside that 75 feet. You know, we put a lot of time and effort into trying to develop that standard. But, but there have been some variances. None of them have been this close. The research that our professional staff did, there's been six variances since 2015, I think, consistent with Matt's information. The closest one we've seen is 35 feet from the lake, and that one was not located in a floodplain. Again, we get some confusion. We got the general mapping that shows that this backyard is in a floodplain. But again, it's schematical in nature. TJ may have some other information, and there may be some additional detailed surveys that could ferret that out further. But it does appear that this structure would be in a floodplain.
Alderwoman DeCenso.
I will also have to vote present because of my current employment at, as the Chief of Staff at the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, which oversees floodplain management. But I'm pretty concerned that a member of our zoning commission is telling constituents to just come up and talk, and we'll get it approved. I mean, that's a little problematic to me.
If he said that, yeah.
If that's, if that is what was said, which is what was conveyed to us. I, call me crazy, but I think that borders on a little sketchy.
Yep. I got just one thing, just a kind of more of a policy in nature, right, is that, yeah, there has been some variances granted. But, I mean, we do have a land use plan, and that's kind of what we're trying to follow. And that's why we've denied everything for our recommendation up to this point. You know, at some point, the policy should be followed because, and how close are we going to let the pools get to the lake shore? Because if this one's granted, the next one's going to come, they're going to say, well, I want five more feet. The next one's going to come, I want five more feet. So at some point, we will, we just need to stop. That's just my comment.
That was the second part of what I was going to say.
Call the question, Mayor.
And what was the closest pool, did you say?
35 feet is the closest one we've got on record since 2015.
Okay. All in favor of the motion to deny, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. And the motion to deny passes eight voting yes, two voting present, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2022-066 for the property located at 4685 Wabash Avenue. Tax ID number is 21-11.0-300-034. Petitioner is Property 21 LLC. Present zoning classification is I-1 Light Industrial District Section 155.040. Requested zoning relief or reclassification to B-1 Highway Business Service District 155.033. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will undertake a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion. We approve as submitted.
Second.
Been moved, second, to approve the petition as submitted and approved by the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. And second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the zoning petition passes 10 voting yes, none voting...
Does this have to do with alcohol?
Is this a liquor establishment?
No, it's a, it's a, I'm sorry, Mayor, I should have...
That's all right. Go ahead.
My understanding, it's just a...
Okay, all in favor of the motion to deny, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. And the motion to deny passes eight voting yes, two voting present, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number twenty-two-two dash zero-six-six for the property located at forty-six eighty-five Wall Bash Avenue. Tax ID number is twenty-one dash eleven point zero dash three hundred dash zero-three-four. Petitioner is Property Twenty-One LLC. Present zoning classification is I-one. Light Industrial District Section one-five-five point zero-four-zero. Requested zoning relief or reclassification to B-one Highway Business Service District one-five-five point zero-three-three. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will undertake a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion we approve as submitted.
Second?
Been moving second to approve the petition as submitted and approved by the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. And second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the zoning petition passes ten voting yes, none voting-
Have to do with alcohol?
Is this a liquor establishment?
No, it's a, it's a, uh, I'm sorry, Mayor, I should've-
That's all right. Go ahead.
Uh, my understanding, it's just a, uh, it's gonna be industrial lot. They're just, they're just rezoning. They don't know what's gonna be in it, so it's just a straight, straight zoning project.
Ten voting yes, none voting no. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is docket number twenty-two-two dash zero-six-seven for the property located at twenty-two zero-one South Dirksen Parkway. Petitioner is Sangamon County. Present zoning classification is B-two Highway Business Service District Section one-five-five point zero-three-four. Requested zoning relief, a variance of Section one-five-five point zero-three-four B. Permitted uses in the B-two General Business District to allow R-five B general residence and office district uses and a conditional permitted use pursuant to Section one-five-five point zero-two-one C-four. Conditional permitted uses in R-five A and B, general residence and office districts institutions, and one-five-five point one-nine-three institutions and a variance of Section one-five-five point zero-zero-one. Definition of lot and principal use to allow more than one principal use on the property consisting of a detention center philanthropic, philanthropic institutional and general office. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval as submitted. Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will undertake a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to move to have discussion on this item.
Second?
Been moving second for a discussion? Um, we do have one person signed up to speak. I don't know if you wanna hear them now or go ahead and discuss first?
We can hear them first, if you would, please.
And that is Felicia McCool?
Yes.
All right. Oh, oh, she's on the phone?
She's on the phone.
Okay, go ahead.
If you'd like to go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, I, my name is Felicia and I was calling because I had concerns about the homeless shelter going in on the Dirksen Parkway Juvenile Detention Center building. Can you guys hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes, we can. Go ahead, ma'am.
So, one, I'm not against any, anybody myself or anything helping the homeless, but I do have a concern by being within my neighborhood. So I have some questions on, like, is there a, when, when these people are in this building, is there a set security time? Will they be inside of the building? Are they able to be outside of the building at any time?
Who is that to answer?
Any other comments? Any other comments, ma'am?
Yes, I didn't know if I could, uh, if this was just, I can do a Q and A or do I just need to go down and say what I feel?
Just, just go ahead and voice your concerns and you have four minutes left to do that.
Okay, so my concern is that it is so close to the school. It's not even a mile away from the school. Or, because homeless people tend to roam and wanna walk. Regardless if they're provided with transportation or not, they have the choice not to even be a part of that transportation. They have the choice to walk or get for transportation and they tend to want to walk everywhere and roam everywhere. So I would be concerned about that in my neighborhood. And around the school, which is less than a mile away. With there's kids who walk to school every day, play in my neighborhood every day. And I'm, I'm, I'm totally not happy about that at all. And I do get that help, you know, the homeless does need help, but why does it have to be in my neighborhood? In my ward. I feel like with homeless people struggling with some mental issues, other issues they have going on, it's better off somewhere near a medical district. I don't wanna come home and see a homeless person walking in my driveway somewhere.
Does that conclude your? Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, ma'am.
So, okay, so I'm, I'm very concerned about this being in my neighborhood, within walking distance of my home, within walking distance of schools. And has the city took that in consideration at all? Will this bring down my property value if they feel like they wanna walk around my neighborhood? Be panhandling at every business that's over there? Which on, in that ward area, we barely have businesses. Now that, I feel like that's going to push them away even more.
Any other comments, ma'am?
Oh, no, that's it.
Well, thank you for calling in. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And as a point of reference, I, oop, sorry. As a point of reference, I ask Corporal Schkalsif, typically we take calls. I don't think we typically would. Correct?
I think the, I think the practice has been to, once we're back in a normal session for zoning, people are generally required to be present at the zoning hearing in order to participate, not via phone call.
Yep, or they can submit them in writing, but if this is the case, the person didn't know, so we'll accept them as part of the documentation for the petition zoning period.
And written comments are always accepted to become part of the record and that's been used, you know, that's been used several times by filing it with the clerk, so it becomes part of the official zoning record.
Thank you. Alderman Williams?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So is anyone from Helping Hands or, if you can come up for a minute, sir? So have you had any type of communication with that particular neighborhood that she's from? Which is Witch Hazel and, you know, Growth, about two blocks from the facility? And also have you had a communication with Abe's Hideout and the Little Strip Mall? The, the adjoining car lot that's, you know, right there next door to the facility? Have you spoke with those folks or anything?
Uh, just at the beginning, sir. My name's Daniel Hamilton. I'm an attorney at Brown Hay and Stevens. I represent Sangamon County, who's the petitioner in this matter. Uh, Sangamon County has met with the business owners in the area and although they had questions, as many would, about this type of use of the property, uh, there were no concerns articulated. We also sort of just jumped into this without any questions. If I could, I'd like to provide a little background to the council, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
What we're talking about here is using the Sangamon County Juvenile Detention Center that is an underutilized facility for addressing a, a, a problem that's been in existence in Springfield for a very long time. The use would be to allow half of the facility, a little less than half actually, to be used as a homeless shelter that would be operated by Helping Hands. Sangamon County would own the facility as they currently do. It would be modified in order to break the facility in half and half would be used for its current use and the other half would be used for shelter services as are currently taking place on Eleventh Street by Helping Hands. The uses will be very similar to the same uses that go on at Helping Hands currently. There won't be expanded uses as were proposed with some previous opportunities. For instance, there won't be any detox center, there won't be any healthcare onsite, aside from minor medical services that already take place on Eleventh Street. So it, it's basically an extension of what is already happening, but with capacity to serve up to eighty-five beds, uh, which is significantly more and will provide an opportunity for more persons who are homeless or, or houseless at the time to find a place to go temporarily. There's also going to be a significant increase in the type of facilities that are available. For instance, right now, it's more or less a dormitory type setting. The new facility will allow for specific spaces for people with specific needs. For instance, those transitioning to housing will have a specific place. Those that are accompanied by a child, which is something that currently there's no, no service for, there will be a space for those people. There will be quiet rooms and sick rooms to segregate folks that need a quiet room or a sick room for the night. So all of these additional services will take place. What won't take place, and I think is very important to talk about, what won't take place is there won't be any sex offenders allowed on the premises. By the, the premises that is, is operated currently by the Illinois Department of Juvenile Justice and the Administrative Office of the Illinois Courts. And per their rules, sex offenders cannot be on the property. So anyone coming into the shelter area will be screened and if they are a sex offender, they will be removed. So number one, no sex offenders. As I discussed earlier, there won't be any detox, alcohol or drug treatment centers and there won't be general public services available either. There will be services available for those that are at the shelter, for shelter services, but not for the general public to come and gather and get services. It's, it's, uh, an extension of what's happening on Eleventh Street and people will be able to access the site through three specific means of transportation. One is the bus stop. There's going to be a new parking lot built for the Helping Hands entrance and the entrance to the facility will be a bus stop. So individuals that want to come from somewhere else in town will be able to use the S M T D bus service and be dropped off at the front door of the shelter. In addition, there will be shuttle services offered that'll run, uh, uh, in the afternoons through the evenings where individuals can access a shuttle at certain designated places around the city and they'll know that a shuttle will be around, they can hop on and get to the shelter. And then the case managers at Helping Hands also offer transportation for individual appointments. If you have a doctor's appointment or a job interview or a housing opportunity comes up, those sorts of things. The case managers will provide individual transportation for the individuals that are using the services there. So there's a number of different ways to get to the facility. One other thing that'll be happening at this facility that doesn't happen currently is that there will be twenty-four seven services. Right now, it's a shelter. You come in the afternoon or evening and you stay for the night. The, the expanded facility will allow for twenty-four seven services, meaning that people will be able to eat at the facility and they'll be able to stay there. There won't be a need to leave during the day the way that there currently is. So those things, in my mind at least, tend, tend to mean that there won't be this roaming around concern that we heard about from the objector. There won't be individuals just walking through the neighborhoods with nowhere to go. There will always be something to do and somewhere to go. You know, the facility is also gonna be specifically organized such that there will be designated screened places for clients of Helping Hands to be outside. So, so in those screened areas, they won't be viewed from the street, from Dirksen or, or from the other streets in the area. So for those reasons, it's, it's different, it's better and it's a good approach. And I'm also happy to go through the standards of variation and the C P U standards, if any of you are interested in those. I, I might put you to sleep if I go through them. But I, I'm happy to offer those as testimony if you would like to hear those.
Thank you. Alderman Redpath?
So, Daniel, is, you're telling us that there's not gonna be any bad characters in this place? Is that what you're saying?
I can't promise that, Mr. Councilmember.
Well, it sounds like your, your screening process will eliminate those and move them to different facilities. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, um, a- as the landlord, so to speak, the Sangamon County, will they be doing the general maintenance for this and keeping everything up to, up to, up to par?
There will be standard maintenance obligations in the lease established so that, you know, the tenant, Helping Hands will have certain obligations for internal maintenance and taking care of the space, but generally the exterior of the space will be taken care of by Sangamon County.
All right, thank you.
Alderman McConley?
Thank you. Alderman Redpath asked one of my questions. I just want to clarify, when we're talking about the expansion of services, that goes hand in hand with onsite staff, twenty-four seven.
That's correct.
So there will be someone at Helping Hands to contact and to be, who's been interacting with, with their clients and knows them at all times.
I, I presume that's accurate.
Thank you.
Alderman Williams?
Yeah, so I initially asked, had you met with any of those home and homeowners in that area? Because wandering is what I'm hearing. You know, I hear that this is a location that's pretty far out. I he- I hear the bus plan, I hear the thing, but you and I both know you cannot make anybody get on a shuttle or get on a bus or stay within the confines of that, uh, facility. Right now, where Helping Hands is located, the guys can walk out, they can walk up and down the street, they can walk over by the new construction where they're building the hub and they can wander. So, uh, when I'm dealing with that car lot and that strip mall and, and them saying, well, they're gonna cross the street and be asking our people as they park their cars to come into these businesses, they're gonna be asking them for change and for money and doing this and that. And we can't guarantee, or let me ask you it this way, we can't stop them from leaving your facility? Is, is that what you're saying to us? You can or you can't?
I, I believe the individuals that have the ability to leave if they so wish.
Okay, so they can walk through the neighborhoods or walk through the parking lots of the businesses or walk through D O Ts parking lot? They can walk wherever they want, correct?
I think what you're talking about is trespassing and if someone's trespassing, they should call the police. The, the property owner should call the police. Just because someone is in the neighborhood doesn't mean that they're allowed to come onto someone else's property. If they're trespassing, the police should be called. If they're walking on the sidewalk, everyone's entitled to do that.
You know, so, so the, the school that they're referring to is a public school and there's a long public sidewalk that goes all the way from Taylor and Ash all the way to Dirksen and Ash. And, 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 and all I'm saying is, with this project, uh, you know, I wanna come in, uh, Helping Hands, they did try to work with at least me and my ward. I, it wasn't my wish to have any of those, because I have several of these type of programs and facilities in Ward Three. They did look out, I guess, as far as making sure, uh, the schools were distant and that the neighborhood associations were kind of, kind of back, but I, you know, it's like anything else. You still have businesses, uh, people who work in those businesses and the customers. And because of the nature of the clientele that you are gonna be servicing with a day program, you're right. It's gonna be twenty-four seven and you don't have the ability to stop the, the wandering. I, I guess my biggest question to you is how do we, uh, are you willing to, to meet with these folks that have those kind of concerns in these neighborhoods that surround, you know, up and down Ash and the houses? Or do you feel you've done all that?
But the county's made a concerted effort to meet with everyone involved. Anybody that hadn't a complaint had an opportunity to come here tonight, as we heard one caller, and they had an opportunity to come to Planning and Zoning Commission, at which there were zero people during that presentation that objected in any way. The standards of variation here are met. The Planning and Zoning Commission made a unanimous recommendation that this be approved. And from a zoning perspective, this is an appropriate project.
Yeah, I think I could, I think with regards to this and answer your question, Alderman Williams, I'm pretty sure in Helping Hands can come up if they like, but with the containment care agencies, I think they'll be responsive, just like Salva Sharmi and any of them. It's supposed to be a proactive approach. Actually, we have a meeting tomorrow with regards to outreach with our police officers and moving that direction. So that's through a grant through the federal government or state government. And, uh, so there will be additional outreach efforts, especially for the homeless. That's what it's geared towards. But I'm sure Helping Hands, if you wanna come up and, you know, kind of give an overview of what, uh, how this will be different, uh, moving forward and especially with the outreach efforts, things of that nature or the program, if you wanna shed light on that. I think what he's concerned about is people just, if someone walks around, it's not gonna be ignored. The situation's not gonna be ignored if they're disrupting neighbors, things of that nature. I think that's what the question is.
Yeah, and I don't think it will be ignored, Mr. Mayor. I mean, currently, I mean, I walk around downtown. My office is downtown and anytime there's an incident with a person that is homeless, the police address that. It'll be addressed in the same way. There will be services available and offered to those that need them and for those that are just doing something that they shouldn't be, the same, uh, the same approach applies that currently applies on Eleventh Street. Nothing is functionally different except the location.
Well, well, so the difference is, right now, they're not there. And they don't have to worry about some of these things you say that ain't gonna happen. They know it ain't gonna happen because it's not there right now. So you are changing their environment, you are changing their neighborhood to where now the possibilities are there. They could cross the street and be in these, uh, different parking lots to these businesses, up and down Ash Street, going toward the school, past the school, all the way up to the high school. And, and, and it's not that these ideals are bad or, or good. I, I always say try to find a way and you're correct. You meet the standards and that's what I tell them. This is a county thing. This ain't a city thing. First of all, it's a county thing and they are within, uh, their rights as the landlord, as the variations. The only thing they had to do is, is to get this here. I guess my final question, because we, we could do this all night, is, uh, so are, would you be willing to hold this and meet with this young lady and some of their neighbors, uh, on some of their questions?
I don't have authority to commit a county to that.
Yeah, I think with regards to the location of the school, I'm familiar with it because my sisters were school teachers, but, uh, I would say that this school is, uh, further away than Lincoln Magnet and the current location. There's Lincoln Magnet's just a couple of blocks away, so I think from that perspective, we have a lot of agencies right there.
So they probably do think that's all right. I'm just trying to speak out for the people in my ward who are going to be impacted, uh, by this project. And, um, I'll, I'll end by just saying, you know, you know, a record has been made here. I've spoke for the people. Uh, I'm not saying you guys are doing anything wrong. I'm not saying the project is a bad project. I'm just saying, like, I asked the consortium when they were here, is this smart? Because I know that you can't make a person get on a bus. I know they can say, I'm walking and walk through there and walk past all those neighborhoods, through all those schools to get all the way downtown. So now we kinda are spreading them in the area that right- So now, we kind of are spreading them in the area that, right now, they are not there. So I'll leave it at that, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, everyone up here on this horseshoe has homeless in their ward, everyone. We're all affected by it. And I got to give the police, when there's problems, any ward, they respond, and they're good about it. Juan Huerta, he responds. You know, I don't care, they may not be there, you know, in that particular shopping center right now, but they could be, whether that comes or not. And, but I guarantee you, we all have homeless walking through neighborhoods and all that. The only time you hear about them is when they cause trouble. And that doesn't happen that much. You know, the Helping Hands is a good organization. I'm sure that they will respond accordingly whenever anything happens, like they've done with, you know, downtown, for, you know, in their current situation. And, you know, I just, I think we should pass this, move it forward, and this is a good step for the homeless. It's a very good step. And I'd ask that we, I'd make a motion that we pass this thing with, based on staff recommendations, I guess it would be.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, some time ago, I was here with the Center for Health and Housing, and, you know, one thing I'll say, that, you know, we met with Brian and the county, and I wish they was here as well to speak, since they are the landlord. I know you're the lawyer and things of that nature, but, you know, from their perspective, as well as their representatives. One thing I do agree with you, Alderman Hanauer, is all of us do have homeless in our wards, and the people will say that the shelters mainly are on into three, and then all the women's purchased ward. So they want to see it spread out further throughout the city. One of the reasons why we're going through this is because we didn't have the community meeting to discuss this thing. This stuff usually goes in the papers on, and stuff, people don't really pay attention. But I can guarantee you, if we talked about it more and reached out to these neighborhood groups, they would come and they would share their concerns. You know, I've got some concerns in Roy's ward, I passed it on to him, we've talked about it. We get what everyone's trying to do, and find a homeless location, for sure, but, you know, we have responsibility to the people and to fill their concerns. My final question would be, is there any official statement from School District 186 on these, on this location? There's three of them, we got two schools, high school and elementary there, and as well as the church. So as we're discussing this, my phone's blowing up, because people are watching the stuff and asking these questions, because they didn't know. So I just want to make those comments clear. Whenever we do this, it doesn't matter whose ward it is, if we go in 10, even though we have some homeless, you know, people are going to come talking, you know, and have some questions. It's just the nature of the beast, and I wish, you know, we didn't have homeless altogether. That's the shape of this country, that's really the focus that we need to be focused on. So we don't even have to have homeless shelters and things like that, and we've got a lot of work to do. So with that said, I respect what my brother will want to do, and, you know, I follow his lead.
Alderman McMen.
To answer your question, sir, District 186, to my knowledge, has not taken a position on this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman McMenam.
I'm a yes vote on this. I think the facility is probably the best facility that we've ever had for homeless shelter, for the, you know, the low barrier warming shelter, we used to call it. Now it's going to be all year round. There's two shelters in Ward Seven, Soldier and House, and then most recently, a supportive housing by Helping Hands on South Park Street. I strongly oppose that because of the transportation issue. There was no, you had to walk about a mile to get to a mass transit bus stop in either, any direction, and you had to walk in all residential neighborhoods. And that went unconvincing to this council. But here, in this case, Helping Hands has got a location with an SMTD, on a MS, mass transit route, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
And then on top of that, you're offering shuttle services. And then on top of that, the staff is also going to be able to make unique transportation arrangements as needed. So this, it seems like Helping Hands, in this case, has gone, has found a location that meets the transportation needs to minimize the wandering type persons. But even if you had wandering type persons that were disruptive in residential neighborhoods, even if they're on the sidewalk, if they're saying things or doing things that are inappropriate, the way I see it, because you don't let detox people into this facility, you don't let sex offenders into this facility, there must be another facility that that kind of a troubled person could be sent to if they would happen to end up at the juvenile detention center, and they're just causing problems. So hopefully, Helping Hands will monitor any problem persons that aren't, you know, they're acting in an antisocial manner in any place they might walk to. So I think this deserves a yes vote.
Alderman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would just like to kind of reiterate some of the positive comments here. I think one thing that we're forgetting is that, when we're talking about Helping Hands, we're talking about an organization that has been not just extraordinarily devoted to the clients that they serve, and to the people they work with in our community, but they've been very successful. I did ask Executive Director Laura Davis for some information about, you know, how did Helping Hands do during the pandemic? How did they do when they're dealing with people in one of the most stressful crisis situations we've had, at least in my lifetime? They avoided an outbreak during the pandemic, using 24/7 sheltering in place with persons who are homeless. That's people who could have left, but there were relationships that were built. I met with Laura this weekend, and, you know, afterwards, there was a gentleman who's sitting outside, just sat down to sit and talk with him. And we talked about the work that they do at Helping Hands. It is relationship building, it's health-based, with a focus on, and we've heard this so many times, but rapid rehousing. So we give, and I appreciate the county coming forward with, you know, a proposed site that gives Helping Hands the space and the ability to expand their services in a way where they can have, you know, more caseworkers, where they're having that direct interaction with clients who are at their most vulnerable, giving them rules, holding expectations, giving them places to do laundry, to shower, to be clean, and be treated as human beings in our community. And I applaud you for, Helping Hands, for the work that you've done. You piloted rapid rehousing. We're now looking at a launchpad for them to expand this program. I asked, I didn't get an address, there are people who are under, you know, case management, who've been rehoused, who live in Ward Eight. I don't get complaints about houses like that, because they've got case management, they've got people looking in there. They're dealing with their clients, and they have a relationship with them, and their clients know who they can reach out to. They know they can call their people at Helping Hands, and they will have someone answer that phone, and they will have someone who supports them. We have a critical issue here, and, yes, I understand their concerns about school distances. My kids went to Lincoln, they saw people who were homeless in the neighborhood when they were at school, and it was just part of kind of the day. They didn't have problems with them, the school was aware of it, and the school just dealt with it, you know, it was just their people in the neighborhood. I mean, that happens in all of our neighborhoods. I do want to ask, was the distance to schools brought up as an issue in zoning? And did this petition, if it was, did this meet the variance requirements for that?
Yeah, there is no, I believe the standard is 100 feet, and this is far beyond that 100 feet. And so from a zoning perspective, it qualified for that standard without any further variation.
Thank you. I mean, I understand we have to deal with kind of the stigma conversation when it comes to dealing with people who are experiencing homelessness. I would like to at least have this vote and this conversation be a recognition of the fact that we have organizations in our community who are actively and with a level of devotion that is truly inspiring, working with this population, getting them to a better place. And I think this location, I mean, right now, they're in the middle of a construction zone. It's going to be a construction zone, it's going to be buses and trains and all sorts of stuff going on. They're landlocked, it's a smaller space. This gives Helping Hands a chance to really be successful in our community, on top of all the successes they've already had. And I am enthusiastically looking forward to voting for the zoning, and again, want to thank the staff from Helping Hands who are here tonight for everything that you do.
Alderman Williams.
Yes, so the issue is asking respectfully to meet with some of these people who still have questions. Not about, it's not about Helping Hands and the good work that they do. It's not about that, I don't know what that was all about. It's about me advocating for my constituents who have questions and issues, and have you taken the time, maybe it is going out of your way to at least sit down with them. So I simply said in my motion, are you willing to hold this, to respect my constituents and give them a chance to hear them out? We know already that the votes are probably going to let this thing happen, but trying to get them to understand would take us a long way, if truly you could hold this and have that meeting with them. It wasn't about the good work that Helping Hands did and all the other things. I know, now, I don't know of a shelter in Ward Ten, I know they say, oh, homeless is everywhere. Well, they don't live everywhere. They don't live in Ward Ten in a facility like the three I got in Ward Three. And I don't know, you may have a house in Ward Eight, or a few houses in Ward Eight, but you don't have a facility. I know that, yes, Helping Hands does a good job in trying to control that population, but the honest to God truth is, they can't. There are going to be those that are mentally challenged, or whatever the case may be, that now are going to be introduced in a side of town further out, that's all. It's the only difference, the same side of town, that we're, now we got these other new innocent people who are going to be disrupted, and we don't want to give the courtesy of at least having a community meeting or anything like that with them? That's all I was trying to get to. I did not one time say, you know, I'm voting no, this is bad, none of that. No, we need to do something about the homeless, I understand that. I have several constituents who continually say, but on our backs, it's always our side of town, it's always our back. So I let the data-driven information speak for itself, where they're at, and where they live, and where Helping Hands tries to do something about it. Because this is a big city. I command you, McMenam, and I voted for a park to get that building as a way of saying, now at least I can tell my people, this is spreading out a little bit. Everybody's doing their share, taking their turn. That, and I hear you. You come back and say, over your objections, they did it. Well, they're probably going to do the same to me tonight. And all I'm saying is, all this getting up here, grandstanding about, it's everywhere. They don't live everywhere. They live in the facility, and now we're expanding the services, so they're going to be night and day? And you think you're going to control them? And we know the law says, you can't make them stay inside there. When the buses stop, what are you going to do? When they decide, I'm walking down the Capital City Shopping Center, what are you going to do? Call the police continuously? Because these are the type of things that I'm just asking, did y'all talk about? Did you talk to all those businesses? And did y'all really have a community meeting about this? That's all, and I'm finished, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. I didn't know if you want to respond to that request to meet with the neighborhood organization, or the neighbors in which, Hazel, I think that's what he's referring to.
Sangamon County is a unit of local government that's represented by board members, and if any of the constituents would like to meet with those board members, I'm sure that they would be happy to do that. I just don't have authority to, number one, hold this, or, number two, to agree to hold it, rather, or, number two, to stipulate that Sangamon County will meet with anyone. I don't have authority to make that commitment on their part this evening.
I guess there is a funding request that's going to come later, so there's going to be, unless that's all been approved, so there would be another public opportunity to go to the county board, or come here, and get an overview at that point, anyway.
I presume that there will be a continued commitment from all levels of government to address this concern.
Sure. Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this this evening. It's a, I think everyone in the horseshoe would agree that we wish that we didn't need these types of services here in our fair city, but unfortunately, that's not the case, we do need them. And, you know, when we last discussed this issue, a similar issue, I'll say, a few years ago, the argument was that we had such a concentration of facilities located in one particular area, meaning right along 11th Street. And when I initially heard about this, I was a little bit surprised, because I guess I didn't have a good feel for what actually the use of the existing juvenile detention facility, how it is indeed underutilized. And I must comment today on the, commend the county for stepping up and volunteering the site, or at least putting it on the table. And not only volunteering the site, but coming up with, I believe it's $5 million for the project. I know there's some renovation work that must be done, and trying to find ways to separate the two, there would actually be two purposes of this structure if this were to succeed, and to separate how important it was to separate. But from a, I guess geographical perspective, if you go out there, there's natural barriers. And, you know, the property to the north is a, more of an industrial area, and it's, I believe it's not even flat, it's kind of hilly between this and the actual industrial property. And then there's a four-lane highway on the east side, and then obviously Ash Street, and some development there. And the way it was described to me by the county and Helping Hands is that they would absolutely be a concerted effort, not only to kind of keep things separate, but private on the property, meaning the, I'm sometimes directionally challenged, but on the north side, where the juvenile detention part would be, obviously, you can't have those folks mixing with the folks from Helping Hands and the clientele. And not only that, but there will be a concerted effort through the redesign to keep the, as Alderman McMenam mentioned, the bus traffic and the transportation part on that side of the building, and away from even the commercial side to the south. So I was encouraged by that. That was, obviously, those are questions, fair questions. No matter where this type of facility is, I think people should ask those types of questions if they're near their neighborhoods, or even in their wards, or what have you. I'm impressed with Helping Hands and the way that Helping Hands has delivered quality services over the years, and quite frankly, their willingness as a part of this to step up and operate the overflow shelter on an ongoing basis. That's a big deal for this community. And remember, as Josh so eloquently put, and I'm going to mess it up tonight, but last week, that, you know, the goal is to have people, people that are homeless progress towards housing, and this is a key component of it. I know we tried different things in different areas in the city over the years, and thanks to a partnership and those private and public that are involved, I plan on voting for it, so thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
My final comment is that, you know, we've been here before, it was A2 before, and it passed, and it's not there now. So, you know, I don't think holding it for 30 days will, or not 30 days, or until, you know, the county does their job and meet with the constituents and where they want to put this building, and we come back and we approve it, or deny it based on the, on what they do. But, you know, I just think that, you know, we have some time to do our due diligence to the people, and make sure that this is right. This is a serious thing that we're going to do, and it needs to be done right. And, you know, we've seen in the past, what we just try to do, and it still doesn't work out, rather, be done right, so, thank you.
Alderman Redpath.
You know, I'm going to vote for this, but I really, there's credence in what Alderman Williams was saying about, why can't we just meet with them? Why can't we, be it the county, or be it the Helping Hands folks, why can't we just talk to them and try to calm their concerns? We feel like this is a secure place, and it's something that's going to be viable for, to help the homeless in Springfield, but why can't we just talk to the people? I mean, just tell them exactly what's going on, so that we can calm their fears. It may not be you, it may not be Helping Hands, but somebody, somebody orchestrate a meeting so they can vent their concerns, and we can, the facility's going to go. But the thing is, is we got to talk to the people and let them know, but we understand what you're thinking about, and we got your back on this. The police will respond if there's situations, we know that. But it wouldn't hurt to talk to the folks, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Is there time sensitivity to the variance? I think that's what the question is. I think that's what the question is.
There is, Mr. Mayor. You know, with an anticipated open date of October 1, in order to accommodate next fall's cold weather, to get the project up and moving, we need approval much sooner rather than later. So it is time sensitive. And in response to Alderman Williams and Alderman Redpath, I will deliver the message. I just can't commit to it tonight.
That's okay. It just, it just doesn't hurt to try, okay? I appreciate it.
Alderman McMenamin?
Yeah, I think this is a time-sensitive matter. Usually I would want to hold something to talk with whoever needs to be talked with. But I look at the record and a month ago, when this is at the zoning commission, there were no objectors, no objectors. When I had a problem with the homeless shelter in Ward 7, there were 20 folks that showed up that night to object. They had four speakers. Tonight, we've got one person on the telephone. I respect that. But I do not sense a reaction from the community to this situation. And based on the timeline we have, I think we should go ahead and vote on this tonight. So I'm going to make a motion for passage tonight.
I made the motion. We need a second.
I'll second the motion. Okay.
Good move in second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the motion passes. Eight voting yes, one voting no, one voting present. Thank you. And that concludes the zoning portion of our meeting. Chair recognizes Treasurer Buscher for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. The corporate fund had a beginning balance in the month of December of $63,340, which took in total receipts of $10,225,93. We had total disbursements in the month of December of $9,895,404, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance of $63,333,089. Of that corporate fund ending balance, the ARPA balance included in that, Mayor, is $23,074,326. This concludes my report, Mayor Langfelder.
Thank you. Chair, entertain a motion to approve the financial report?
Good move.
Second.
Good move in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We do have a presentation with Neil Brumleavy from Massey, Massey about the downtown beautification. Please hear.
Yes, I'm Neil Brumleavy, a landscaper architect with Massey, Massey and Associates. All right, perfect. Thank you. And tonight, I wanted to provide just a brief update of the downtown beautification plan that we completed back in late 2021. So with this, the slide that you're seeing up on the screen right now is the general project area. It's defined by the blue outline, which is Jefferson Street to the north, Ninth Street to the east, Jackson to the south, and Second to the west. So with this study, we looked at various beautification projects that could be identified as kind of a menu and moving forward to pick from for improving the downtown area. And so with that, we looked at existing conditions. We tried to devise practical solutions to issues that we uncovered. And we made some recommendations for each of these. And I'll go through these categories. What you're seeing tonight is part of just pieces of a larger booklet that was prepared that has a lot of information in there. Again, just a broad summary of what that information is. So what you're seeing on the screen now is four of eight enhancement concepts that we looked at. These range from simple repairs and replacements to wayfinding signs, to a few projects that have been completed, such as planters and tree planting as well. And you can see the additional five through eight here. Again, a lot of those stemmed around tree planting, technology improvements, screening of parking lots, mainly to enhance the aesthetic look and feel of the downtown area. After we developed those eight enhancement concepts, we looked at product information that could be used to enhance the area. That range from entrance gateway structures, you see some images up there, wayfinding signs, styles of planters that could be used within the downtown, screening of adjacent parking lots, street trees, and recommendation for species. So this looked at more specific product information that could be utilized as projects were identified and prioritized to move forward. With that kind of developed, then we started looking at where these improvements needed to be positioned on the planned view of downtown. This is just, again, one example of where multiple improvements, you know, might be located. We started looking at quantities, how many trees needed to be planted in areas where trees were missing or concrete patches were made, you know, where planters might be positioned, where wayfinding signs might be positioned as well. So you're just seeing a simple example of detailed sheets that were broken out throughout the whole downtown area to identify those components. As I mentioned, the first project then that stemmed off of this was the trees and planters. I'm not expecting you to read all of this at all, but just knowing that that was really one project that was identified. And that came to fruition fairly quickly during this, the course of this study, which was kind of interrupted by COVID. We started this pre-COVID. COVID hit. It went on a hold for a while. And then we picked it up again after that. But the planters and trees was identified as a priority project. What you're seeing in image on the screen now is how those were positioned throughout the downtown area. So we had quite a few existing planters that were still in decent condition and we felt like should be moved instead of just trashed. We relocated those to the perimeter of this project area. So you see in the four quadrants. And then looked at enhancing the core areas of Fifth and Sixth Street and Monroe and Adams with new planters. So you see within the red outlined area where those new planters were positioned. And hopefully, we've all had the chance to see those planters this fall. They were planted with beautiful fall flowering plants. Again, you know, looking at how these were clustered together near intersections to try and decrease maintenance watering. You could stop water three at a time. You would also have a more visual impact by clustering these together. And then also some trough-style planters that you're seeing in the lower image and how those were used at mid-blocks to add some color and pop to those particular locations. And then trees. You know, when we looked at the downtown, it was very apparent that throughout the years, trees had died. They were not being replaced. And so a simple recommendation was to replace these downtown street trees. So again, we did a study for where those needed to be positioned. This is a plan sheet from the construction documents that we prepared to indicate to a contractor exactly where these trees needed to be removed in some cases that were dead or diseased or dying. And in other cases, just simply replaced at their current position. Another thing, as I mentioned, during COVID, the parklets kind of originated, you know, businesses were requesting to utilize the sidewalk space for outdoor dining or shopping. And so this was kind of added when we picked it back up again, is we needed to develop a set of guidelines to establish for the aesthetic of what those parklets look like. So we worked with the city to modify the central business district parklet guidelines. And then we developed a simple kind of packet for business owners, shop owners to utilize, to be able to pick up and say, okay, you know, if I wanted a parklet, here's what I need to do. I need to have a deck structure to make sure it's safe. I need barriers and deflectors, you know, what kind of site furnishings can be used. So we wanted to provide a set of guidelines that provided some consistency to these parklets, but yet still allow the individual business owners, you know, the opportunity to customize those. And so you see here where certain structures could be allowed. Safety barriers were the consistent theme. We did recommend some precast concrete planters on each end of the parklet structures. That was really providing the unifying element for these parklet structures. And the businesses could customize the parklet itself from that point on. Another topic that came up is decorative lighting. You know, different than your area lighting, which we already have in downtown with the street lights and the pedestrian light fixtures. This really looks at special lighting to highlight certain features. So we developed just a very simple plan of looking at architectural lighting on the old state Capitol Square and how that would be. You're seeing that indicated in yellow. We also looked at some overhead street lighting. And that's indicated in the cyan or blue color on the screen. And then some strand lighting across the sidewalk on Fifth and Sixth Street originating out from the square. And so this is a project that I know, you know, has some interest. Again, it's sort of this menu of what's important and prioritizing, you know, what projects can be picked off from this. Again, image examples showing what, what type of lighting we're talking about when we say architectural, how to highlight the facades of buildings, what we're talking about with the strand lighting either over the street or the sidewalk. And wayfinding was another thing that came out of this particular study. Looking at how to direct motorists, pedestrians, visitors to certain sites within the downtown area. We looked at developing, you know, a design template for what these signs could be. Again, very original, you know, early concepts. Not to say they have to be this, but just one kind of image example of what these wayfinding signs could be. We had a wayfinding sign for motorists on the left and then a smaller version for pedestrians. And how those might fit into the downtown areas. And then finally, this was not part of the study, but it is within the project area. And so did, you know, this could lead to its own discussion. But the North Mansion block, obviously, being a key component within our project area of providing an enhancement to the downtown that we feel would be very helpful. And with that, I think that's my very brief overview of, again, a larger study that was prepared.
Yeah, the reason we had you come is because of the receptacle discussion we had last week.
Right.
So I appreciate you coming and that's one area you helped look at. But I think what we're going to do is put it back out for bid. I think, is that right, Nate? Because of the, seeing what can transpire with regards to material costs, things of that nature.
Yeah, that's correct. We're going to go ahead and withdraw the bid. And then we want to add more weight to the, to the price and adjust a couple of the other things. Then we're going to put it out to bid shortly so that we can still get them hopefully installed as early as the summer.
Alderman, hand out.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate that because when I was looking through it, some of the scoring seemed to be a little, little off. I've done a lot of, I've done a lot of RFPs when I worked for the state in previous life. And, you know, just a good example is under the warranty section. A 20-year warranty didn't get scored as high as a 10-year warranty. That's crazy to me. I mean, that's.
Yeah, and I think there was more when you read into the warranties and everything along those lines.
20-year warranty though, on a 10-year, that's.
No, I understand if it's apples to apples, but if there were other things built into that. But with that being said, we're planning on withdrawing. We'll look at that.
I appreciate that and I thank you for doing it. I'm not against getting nice receptacles, but the cost just seems way too crazy. So, thank you.
Alderman Gregory?
No, I'm happy to hear that. And I'm all for downtown beautification. I'm a representative of downtown. And, you know, with your presentation that you, that you gave, I believe it stops our downtown visual. I believe it stops a little bit short of some, you know, going around some areas where our tourists are going to go, like the Dana Thomas House, the Y Block, you know, on and on. So I think our footprint at least needs to go to Lawrence, Third and Lawrence, up to Ninth Street and Lawrence. And then we will be able to capture some more of our places where tourists are going to come, probably more so than anywhere else downtown, you know, until the nightlife. So I really want that, you know, to be considered. Because I would like, you know, when we come back, if it's a good price for trash cans, I'm sure you'll work it out. But I would like those areas to be compensated as well, you know, included, rather, as well as they need some attention. And, you know, like I say, a good portion of our tourism definitely goes to visit the Lincoln Homes. And, you know, that's another one spot, you know, in our community. Thank you.
Yeah, as money allows, we'll move it further. And I think actually DNR, the state's doing the Old Y Block YMCA. I think they have plans or in the process of developing plans for the Dana Thomas House and that expansion, hopefully. Alderman Williams?
Yes, so that sample picture that I got on email, I hope, I guess all of us got it. Is that particular can somewhere in Springfield right now?
Yeah, you can see it right out here at the plaza.
I just was, I said I've seen this somewhere before.
As well as Long Capitol Avenue.
Where?
Long Capitol Avenue as well, between Fifth and Ninth.
Yes, thank you. I was just wondering if we had some already. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the January 3, 2023 regular city council meeting. Improve the minutes. Good move in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair, entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances in the record of the city council meeting.
Good move.
Second.
Good move in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Chair, entertain a motion to place the, incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda in the record of the city council meeting for final passage.
Second.
Good move in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair, entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
Good move.
Second.
Good move in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Chair, entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda. All those in favors, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the consent agenda passes. 10 voting yes, none voting no. Agenda number 2022-384, 2022-463, 2022-590, and 2023-001 remain tabled during committee. Is there a motion, I guess, to pull 2022-590 out of committee with regards to the lease for the Office of Springfield Convention Visitors Bureau?
Good move.
Second.
Good move in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2022-574, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorization execution of contract number PW23-11-82 with Green Track LLC for the demolition and site clearance of 66 units in Popular Place in amount not to exceed $1,345,370 for the Office of Public Works. Chair, entertain a motion to place agenda number 2022-574 on final passage.
Mr. Mayor, can I request that we hold this until the 31st?
Yeah, I don't know the time sensitivity of it.
Nate? We don't, that would be moving it to February, Alderman Williams, because.
Yeah, it'd have to be February.
Because we don't meet in January 24.
Yeah, I know that they wanted to get going on the demos, obviously, as soon as possible. So it'll bump the demos back three weeks by the time we get the contracts executed.
So if it gets approved tonight, you start when?
Well, you get the contracts executed and everything along those lines.
So that should be time to hold it?
I'm not sure of the developer's schedule.
Yeah, we'll.
You have to demo before you can do the construction. So I don't know how that impacts everything.
Right. Yep. It'll obviously take a little bit of time to get the contracts executed. We've not had a pre-construction meeting. We'll do that and work out the schedule once we have the pre-construction meeting. So it just will delay that process starting three weeks.
Yeah, so I'm thinking you can meet, and, you know, all that, 31st, we'll go ahead and have this approved.
We don't have a meeting 31st.
Or with the next, the next city council.
Well, we'll call a special city council meeting if they need it prior to that.
I don't think they would, but okay.
But we'll check. Because I think we're all in agreement. We don't want to delay the project.
Well, I would be the last one to want to do that.
So why are we delaying?
Okay, all in favor to send it back to committee?
He's got a question.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Oh, sorry, Alderman Gregory.
Part of the reason, part of the reason why Alderman Williams, if I may, is holding this is because they haven't communicated with the man. And the respectful thing for them to do is at least communicate with him and let him know where he's going. We've come up here, we fought for something to have a minority representation on the project. And there's people all over our back from our community. and there's people all over our back from our community asking us when they're going to communicate, when we're going to have these meetings, and they haven't communicated with the man. So that's why he's holding it, so that, you know, so they can at least call and see what's going on, or at least fulfill their portion of what, you know, we're trying to do with this project. And it's just about a respect thing, you know? I think he deserves at least that much, you know, some communication. Thank you.
Well, I'll call him and let him know and have him give you a call. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, send it back to committee, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
No.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is agenda number 2022-575, ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation. I guess we don't need to do this. So a motion to send item number 2022-575 back to committee.
So moved.
The move in second, any discussion? And this is the supplemental appropriation for $1,345,370 for the demolition of Poplar Place. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2022-584, an ordinance approving the appointment of John J. Kennedy to the Police Community Review Commission. Chairman, entertain a motion for ominous vote.
Move.
Right? Alderman Conley?
That's exactly what I was going to say. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
584 to 587.
Okay.
584 to 587.
For 2022-584 to 2022-587.
Clerk, I will be a present on 586.
Okay.
Thank you.
The move in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Next item was agenda number 2022-585, an ordinance approving the appointment of Curtis J. Tomlin to the Springfield Mechanical Commission. 2022-587, the ordinance was to approve the appointment of Yvonne Dion to the Municipal Band Commission. Chairman, entertain a motion to place agenda number 2022-585 through 2022-587 on final passage.
I think you missed 584, 586, Mayor.
Oh, 586. And that is for the 2022-586, approving the appointment of Ashley Yogurs to the Springfield Historic Sites Commission. So is there a motion to approve? All of those?
Move.
Second.
Move in second, any discussion? All in favor-
Just clerk, I'll be present on 586 also.
Noted.
Thank you.
All in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the appointments passed, 10 voting yes, none voting no, with the exceptions of the noted presence for Alderman Conley and DeSenzo on the appropriate appointments. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2022-590, an ordinance authorizing a 10-year renewal memorandum of understanding with the State of Illinois Department of Natural Resources for space located at One Old State Capitol Plaza known as the Lincoln Hernan Law Office to be used for a tourist visitor's center for an amount not to exceed $20,000 annually for the Springfield Convention Visitors Bureau. Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
The move in second, discussion? I don't know if Scott Dolls here.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. This will be a 10-year renewal to our existing agreement that we have with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. We've occupied that space for five years. We've seen record numbers of visitors move through the space at our past location, at our administrative office on Seventh Street. We saw about 3,000 visitors a year come through that location. In 2019, we saw almost 20,000 visitors move through the Lincoln Hernan Law Offices. Last year, we saw about 12,000 visitors move through, again, coming back off of COVID. We anticipate those numbers to increase, especially as they do improvements to the Lincoln Hernan Law Offices, and they hopefully reopen the second floor space. When they did that about 10 years ago, they had 40,000 visitors come through on those tours. So we are looking at a space that is going to extend over the next 10 years and be used more and more through the years. I think it's a good move to go ahead and renew it now. Oh, and then also, a part of that is the city has offset their rent for improvements made to the Lincoln Hernan Law Offices, and we plan on indeed using that portion of the agreement. As you know, we have plans for a podcast studio, and we believe that that will be able to be offset by the rent. So the cost of the podcast studio would come off the rent and have years that we would have without that rent. So obviously, I know Alderman Gregory, you're for that as well, and we're looking forward to bringing that ordinance up next.
Great. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, eight voting yes, none voting no, and two voting present. Next item is agenda number 2022-591, and we ask that that be withdrawn?
So moved.
Second.
The move in second, any discussion? This is referring to the trash receptacles. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2022-593, an ordinance creating a PACE area and establishing the Illinois Finance Authority property-assess clean energy program for record owners of property that, from time to time, may voluntarily request a levy of special assessments to secure the financing or refinancing of their PACE projects. Authorizing program administrators to act thereunder, designating the Illinois Finance Authority as the sole issuer of bonds and notes, and approving related matters. Chairman, entertain a motion to place agenda number 2022-593 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
The move in second, discussion? We do have Chris Meister from the Illinois Finance Authority here. If you'd like to come up and introduce yourself, he's the executive director, so we appreciate you coming in and bringing this program to the forefront.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Council members, my name's Chris Meister. I'm executive director of the Illinois Finance Authority. We were previously, before this council, in September, there were two projects. I was pleased to see the Old State Capitol Square as part of the beautification project. Back in September, you approved two PACE financings through a lender known as Nuveen Greenworks for the PNC building north of the Old State Capitol Plaza and the Illinois Building at 607 East Adams. It was a combined amount of $3.3 million. Those were successfully closed, and we're grateful to all of you for being open to the PACE program. We're here today, before all of you, to ask for an ordinance that would expand the PACE areas under the Illinois Finance Authority program to the corporate limits of the city of Springfield, to make this favorable financing available to all commercial property owners. And I can go into this deeper, but I can also answer any questions, should the council members have any. I know you've been here for quite a while.
Well, thank you. Alderman Conley?
Thank you. This is actually still one of our shorter meetings, so I'm not going to belabor it too long. When this ordinance passes, I do have a developer who's interested in the program. I just refer them directly to you, is that correct?
Yes, my colleague Brad Fletcher, who is here before you in September, he was one of the architects of the state statute and the documentation that Council Zirkel has. He is a well-known asset to our state among the community of PACE lenders, and he is eager to provide technical assistance to both the city of Springfield, its staff, its council, and, most importantly, the community of commercial property owners and the potential universe of PACE lenders.
Wonderful. I have been promoting this program for you, so, yeah, I do have a developer who should be reaching out very soon.
Thank you very much.
Alderman McMedema?
Mr. Meister, White Oaks Mall may be interested in this type of an approach. Three mall directors ago, they were starting to pursue it, and they've had a series of directors since then. The current director is Walter Gavin. He's been on, in that position, four or five months. So White Oaks Mall, Walter Gavin.
Okay, thank you very much. Obviously, I'm familiar with White Oaks Mall, and it really fits the profile of the sort of commercial property that would be in need of the sorts of cost-efficient improvements that would make that commercial space economically viable. So we're eager to talk to mall manager Gavin.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Is there any unfinished business come before the city council? Alderman Gregory?
Mr. Mayor, real quickly, I just wanted to just point out, any time I've been real critical on something, I do want it when it comes back. But Leland Grove, I did, we all got that letter that they did pay us back that million dollars. I know, you know, I was critical of that, so I just wanted to point that out, and, you know, hey, it followed, it came out straight. Our firefighters, I did speak to Mr. Moore, who's helping us out in recruiting, and we had over 20 minority candidates show up for the test, and, you know, over half of those, you know, did tests. So, you know, hopefully, when that test comes out, you know, rule of thumb, usually you get about half of that. So they are putting in the work, and I appreciate them, and we thank them. So, and finally, chief, we appreciate those 11th Street speed gauges. I have seen a noticeable pace, you know, on those. You know, you can see people, you know, going faster than they're allowed it, speeding and slowing down right there when the lights up like that, especially around Harvard Park School, I think it's going to help us out in that area, so appreciate you.
Great. Is there any new business?
Mayor-
Alderman Williams?
So, I'm sorry, on the same subject, so that million dollars, so Nate, what y'all going to do with it?
Nate, on the Leland Grove?
Yeah, that million dollars, they came back.
That was from Leland Grove? Goes to the cost of the project.
I like to meet with you, I got some ideals.
To wash, though. I just want to say we got it back, that's it.
Hey, can you walk? We put those up.
Yeah.
Appreciate you, Nate.
Any other new business?
Oh.
We do have Alderman DeSenzo.
Happy belated birthday, Mayor.
Oh, thanks. Yep, and actually, it was Dan Wright's birthday yesterday, too.
It was who?
Yep, Dan Wright, State's Attorney.
Yeah.
Yep, so we do have Ward Five and Six, Ward Plan Meeting on Wednesday, I believe.
Thursday.
Or Thursday, yep.
Don't speed us up.
Westminster Presbyterian Church on 533 South Walnut from 5:00 to 6:30. Then on Saturday, Ward Two and Three at the Salvation Army Community Center on Clearlake from 9:00 to 10:30. And then SSGA Annual Membership Meeting is Friday at the Memorial Learning Center on Miller, and that's at 8 o'clock. Alderman Conley?
Mayor, you forgot to mention Ward Eight will be before we meet again, so that's next Monday.
Is that on Monday?
Monday, the 23rd, yep.
Thank you for the reminder. And where's that at?
That will be at LRS.
LRS.
5:30 to 7:30.
5:30 to 7:30. Very good.
It's 5:30 to 7:30.
5:30 to-
Is it 5:30 or 5?
No, 5 to 6. Sorry, I'm confusing that with the meeting I have the following night, which is 5:30 to 7:30.
Starts at 5 o'clock. Yep, they all start at 5. Thank you. Any other new business? Have people signed up to speak?
We do.
Well, Mayor, Tom Schaefer, 2179 South 11th, thank you for your time. I won't yell at you on your birthday, Mayor.
Well, yes, it was yesterday, so you-
I want to say hi to all my friends and confidants on the council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, a very difficult time in our city. I noticed that the incident on North 11th Street with the death of Mr. Owens has made the national news, the ABC Evening News, Inside Edition, CNN, the scroll on Good Morning America, as well as full coverage on Good Morning America. It seems like the coastal media only covers the Midwest when we have a tragedy or a tornado, which is unfortunate, because we have a good community, filled with good people. The years that I spent in the emergency medical service with Mr. Frank Edwards, who's deceased now, was filled with good people doing good work for the citizens of our town. And now we've been brought into a horrendous situation with two paramedics who were previously doing good work for our community now facing the most serious charge that our criminal statutes allow. We have a good company that's been good to our city for many, many years, facing potential catastrophe with a civil lawsuit. We have bad press, we have truly a community, we have a loss of a family from a young man who was struggling with issues of his own, including mental health. If you remember decades ago, Andrew Salinger died in a horrendous incident with our city police, and he was facing a mental health crisis. Time and time again in our community with the mentally ill community who are very rarely violent, who struggle with their own demons, sometimes for decades. They rely on our community for assistance, and this man did as well. And what he received was not the best. It was, and so it reminds me, in the Salinger incident, the city police, in their wisdom, instituted a crisis intervention team. And I think it was well thought out then, and I think it's well thought out now. With previous discussions with the police chief, our new recruits on the police force now receive dedicated training in de-escalation and crisis intervention. And I think that this reanimation of the crisis intervention team is critical to help mitigate these types of incidents. You know, everybody says, well, I got a plan, I got a safety plan, and I got a first response plan. Yeah, no plan survives having a mentally ill person in your front lawn or at your front door. It's the most challenging, difficult group, it's sometimes even worse than hardened criminals. We have a police force for hardened criminals. But the mentally ill, you don't know if they need compassion, if they need rough treatment, if they need a team, if they, they certainly don't need the B team or the junior varsity team, they need the A team. Just like Mr. Owens, he needed the best that this city had to offer, and he got much less. Now there's going to be a criminal trial, the defendants in this case will have their day in court. A very prominent attorney has been retained by the family of the deceased, Mr. Owens. I hope that they receive some type of justice in their time of loss. But now the city has to go on, and our homeless community has not lessened in the years since the death of Andrew Salinger. If anything, it has increased. It has been just as difficult today to work with, to mitigate, to alleviate as it was 30 years ago. What big solutions are hard to come by in these areas. But I think that the crisis intervention team is one of the solutions, that the team concept is a concept I believe in. I saw it over and over in the fire department and emergency medical services. Some incidents are so horrendously challenging that only a team can be successful. And sometimes with big fires or all-night fires, even a team isn't enough. We still have big losses. So this homeless community, this mentally ill community, this community that is challenged by their own demons, that reach out to us for assistance, it's going to be an ongoing struggle. But I would urge the police department, the chief, and community leaders to reexamine this crisis intervention team. I think it was the proper move then, and I believe it's the proper move now. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but-
Yep. I don't know, Alderman Conley, was that the previous-
Oh, no, that's from a while. I have no comments on that.
Mr. Schaefer, thank you for coming up to speak, but the man who lost his life, his name was Mr. Moore, not Mr. Owens. So I think we should at least give him the respect of saying his correct name.
I totally stand corrected, and I totally am embarrassed by that faux pas, and I want to apologize.
Thank you.
His name is Earl Owens.
No.
Moore.
More.
Earl Moore, Jr.
Correct.
Is his name.
I ate at the McDonald's where he was employed at at least 50 times-
Yeah.
Over the past decade, and it's a tragic loss for him and his family. I want to apologize very much. I thank you for listening to my concerns and...
I'm not finished, I'm not finished. You know, you made some blanket statements that are a little disturbing, especially about the two people that have been charged in this. One had been previously charged in a wrongful death situation of a child.
And acquitted.
Regardless.
Well, I, I believe an innocent till proven guilty, Alderwoman.
Well, that, that's fine. We, we can, we can agree to disagree, but you're making a lot of blanket statements about what happened and how it happened, and that, you know, you're, you're referring to Mr. Moore as a homeless individual, and...
No, I don't believe I did. I believe I referred to him as a person who was suffering a mental crisis.
Well, that's not really what's been even portrayed in the press, and I'm, I'm not an expert on what happened here, and I was not there that evening, but I think, uh...
But you certainly feel free to criticize somebody who stepped up to speak about an issue that shocked our community.
Let Alderman DeSenzo finish, please.
I'm not criticizing you, I'm trying to correct some misguided statements. And they are misguided statements. You were saying, you were calling him by the wrong name.
That's, and I apologize for it.
Okay, so, I mean, let's just get some of the basic facts straight on this. Does there need to be a crisis, crisis intervention team by the Springfield Police Department? I don't know. Like I said, I wasn't there, I'm, I'm not an expert on this situation.
Well, I, I think the way it went could be better.
Would you please stop interrupting me? I didn't interrupt you.
Thought this was a back and forth, Alderwoman.
No, it's not, actually.
I stand corrected again.
Yes, thank you.
If you'd just direct your comments to the chair, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, you know, I've been hesitant to speak out on this because I don't know all the facts. And I do know that some, all I know is that someone lost their life that shouldn't have, and that someone was mistreated by professionals, um, that were supposed to know what they were doing and apparently didn't. That's what I know about this. So, um, I'm not here to fight with you. I'm just here to, to correct some, some mischaracterizations of, of what happened. That's all.
Well, I know that the entire country has, uh, seen this incident. It's been on three networks that I've seen personally, uh, including a morning show, including a scroll, a graphic that showed it over and over at least 25 times, mentioned our community by name. It's a horrendous incident that's now, that's clearly not over. The family has retained, uh, a lawyer who's done, uh, individuals who are nationwide in their outrage of what's happened to them. And apparently, that's about coming to us. I hear footsteps. These kind of guys, these kinds of national lawyers, they don't tread lightly. They'll try to stomp on our community. And if you think that I made generalizations, wait till you hear them speak. Wait till you hear them try to tarnish the good people of our community, where I go back for four generations, and, uh, just like many members of this council do. And we're going to have to toughen up because it's going to be difficult for us. And if you think that I'm generalizing, wait till you see those type of speeches taken nationally, trying to slur our community in, in a sense of loss, in a sense of outrage. Nobody wanted this to occur, so...
If it's true, it's not a slur.
Yeah. Go ahead, continue. So I guess it's, it's wrong for me to do it, but it's okay for the Alderwoman to do it, so I, I understand. I understand the dynamic.
Your time's up.
It's difficult to be up here at a difficult time, but, uh, that's okay. We all know who's getting treated fairly. I guess there's all kinds of unfair treatment in the world, including at this, this horseshoe. But thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, point of order, your time is up.
Alderman McMinima?
Yeah, Mr. Schaefer, I think you care about our community and our city, and I think you were prompted in part to speak tonight because you were on a, um, Springfield Fire Department Response Team. You've delivered babies, as I understand it.
Four.
You've been out there when no one else was available to help, you know, extraction from car wreck scenes. So I just, I'm not asking you to comment, I'm just saying I understand why you're here tonight, and, um, I respect you for, you know, taking the time out to try to comment about something that you're somewhat familiar with, even though, you know, not everyone's going to agree with everything you have to say, of course, but I just want to put that out there, that you do have experience in this type of, uh, the type of response that's needed by professionals, so thanks a lot.
Yeah, I'd ask the chief to come up, and he can speak to the...
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman DeSenzo?
I understand why he's here as well. That's neither here nor there. Is this community going to be stomped on because something horrible happened to an innocent person? Yes, that's probably true. Have we been stomped on before? Uh-huh, yes, we have. It's happened. We're still here, and those of us on this horseshoe, uh, and that are in the audience are here to fight for this community. And we're here to represent this community and make this community the best city it can possibly be. We, we wouldn't, believe me, we wouldn't sit up here and do it otherwise. So, um, you know, this isn't a fight, this is, we're all on the same page, and yes, we all know what we're in for. We just went through it with a Springfield police officer not long ago. That also made national news. So we are familiar with this sort of activity because we've been through it before.
Alderman Conley?
I, I was just...
Go ahead, Chief.
Okay.
I would just like to make some comments on, uh, the crisis intervention team. We currently have 84 officers that, um, are qualified and have received a certificate in the crisis intervention. Essentially, what that is, is a 40-hour class where officers are provided some sort of insight, um, into the mindset of mental health and how to deal with those individuals. Again, one thing that I touched on previously, law enforcement is not the subject matter expert in every field, but if we can continue to train and get better and become more professional, that's what we're committed to. And the crisis intervention team and program is simply a one avenue to that. As part of the Safety Act, all new law enforcement officers that graduate the academy will receive that same 40-hour, uh, training. Additionally, uh, also part of the Safety Act, our entire department, uh, receives annual training on crisis intervention, albeit not 40 hours, but, uh, we do receive training on that. One more component I would like to mention is, uh, tomorrow we'll be announcing, uh, this 3-point million, 3.1 million dollar pilot program that Springfield Police Department is lucky enough to be a part of. It's a deflection task force program here in the state, which is designed to help, uh, victims, specifically victims, uh, in the homelessness community, uh, to deflect them from simply law enforcement encounters and get them incorporated into our social service network to provide them, uh, the help, um, and the services that they desperately need. So, uh, again, law enforcement is taking a different shape when it comes to mental health, when it comes to homelessness, and that's our commitment. I mentioned this earlier, uh, when we received that accreditation award. It's about professionalizing our agency, and we wouldn't be able to do these things without your trust and your guidance and your support, so, thank you.
Yeah, Chief, and appreciate your participation, the Martin Luther King Jr., uh, activities yesterday, as well as your command staff, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish, or anybody else sign up?
No one else.
Anybody else wish to address the council?
Mr. Mayor, can I just? I just want to say real quickly that I appreciate you, uh, Alderwoman DeSenzo, for, you know, just putting it out there. You know, he does deserve that, that, that respect of, of having his name, um, spoken the correct way in public. And I, I know, Mr. Schaefer, you wasn't trying to do that, you're just talking fast. But, you know, that's how, that's how serious it is, you know, that, that we got to make sure we add these things right. I'm sure his family's watching and stuff like that, so, um, you know, a tough situation, you know, for, for me. You know, that happened on North 11th, and me and Chief was on the phone about something that happened on South 11th. You know, lady wake up with a, um, bullet hole in her, in her head. So, um, these are some very, very difficult times, um, in our community. But, but as we have before, we're going to rise above it, and we're going to work through it, so, um, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council? Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. We're adjourned, thank you.